I'd like to welcome everyone to the Daytona Beach City Commission Meeting. It's August 19th, 2020. We are delighted to have each of you with us and excited about tonight's meeting. This time, I would ask that Ms. Lamagna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. All the persons who are strongly encouraged to submit online public comments forms during the state of emergency, persons may visit City Hall to drink or comment to make public comments on propositions filed for the City Commission Agenda through a vote, subject to city procedures and all social distancing requirements established by the government executive order. The commission chair will be close to the public. City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comments and an audio and video feed to this City Commission Chair. Yellow forms will be provided to persons who wish to make public comments. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on items before the City Commission and the emergency line from call to call for two and a half minutes. The lobby will be, will also have a limited access area of zone of distancing for persons waiting to make public comments. In addition, the exterior entryway at the City Hall will be equipped with a house speaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to state limitations in the lobby. Persons may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate time from call to call. Persons who have finished speaking or are not excited to speak on a matter from the board of the City Commission will not be permitted to remain in City Hall. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, using a facial mask if mandated to combat COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission, considering any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment and citizens may speak at the designated time. Also, citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock and the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Okay, Ms. Lamagna, may we please have a roll call at this time?
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Yeah.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have our invocation by Commissioner Traeger, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Gilliland.
Heavenly Father, we come here today and ask for your help in getting over our crises that we are facing today and this whole year, for example. We know that you know what is best for us, and we ask that you do what you can to help us. We have lost so many people that we dearly loved and that we dearly cared for, and I fear we will lose some more. Please look down upon us, give us your mercy, and get this miserable thing over with as soon as you can. We ask your blessing upon our first responders and other those who are our essential employees, and also upon the commission that we make wise and carefully decided decisions. Please guide us and look over us in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the July 15th, 2020 regular City Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in our position, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. We'll now have our agenda. If there are any additions, our city manager will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items to add. One, 8L is adding to the consent agenda $250 donation and a $350 donation to agencies by the commission. And item 10E is, under administrative items, is declaring Paula R. Reed duly elected for the term of election beginning November 11th, 2020.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on, we have no presentations this evening under item number six, so we'll move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the City Commission for items on the consent agenda, and my only speaker is John Nicholson.
With regard to this, I don't recall, I think Ruth was there at the Peninsula Women's Club, they presented three options, leaving the traffic signal as it is and doing nothing, having this horrendous three roundabouts, one of which was a double, and they suggested traffic go through Mitchell, which is a tiny one-lane road, which would never have handled two-way traffic, or this A-1A roundabout. You had no other choice. So it was really limited, and nobody could speak about anything else. So when it was presented to us, or to the City Commission here, it was presented in the fact that we had only two options. We either do the roundabout or get no money from FDOT. That did not turn out to be the case. FDOT was willing to listen to other options. The neighborhood would prefer and fanned it existing light system. So rather than using the word either/or, I would ask you just to say, we, the residents and the city, and you can discuss this, whether you all like the idea of having that backup and the problems that a roundabout would occur, or pass it with the idea of the extended, which is I believe that most of the people that live on beachside would prefer the traffic light rather than the roundabout. So if you would discuss it and at least make the decision whether you want to use that word either, because that gives them an option, like we don't care. And in essence, I believe we really do. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We'll now move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, JMJ Silver Pine Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 54 plus or minus acres of land generally located southeast of the intersection of International Golf Drive and LPJ Boulevard from golf and Level 2 residential to Level 1 residential, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood T, development policy, to limit the residential density of the entire area of the land subject to the policy, consisting of 141.4 plus or minus acres to four units per acre, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I heard a motion. It's a little bit muffled, but I heard a motion, I think, from Commissioner Gilliland, and I heard a second.
Commissioner May?
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
For the record, I didn't have any speakers for this item. Moving on to item 9B, and it is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Silver Pine Resoning to Plan Development General, PDG. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 141.4 plus or minus acres of property generally located southeast of the intersection of International Golf Drive and LPJ Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General District to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Silver Pine Plan District Agreement to allow for development of the property being rezoned with single-family dwellings subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second.
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf-
Do we have any speakers?
I have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
I have a little bit of a problem with all the modifications. They want to maximum lot coverage from 35% to 50%. They want to have the frontage from 50 to 40. That's actually-
Thank you.
For every 200 feet of frontage, they're crowding in an extra dwelling. I understand that they can have four dwelling units per acre, but what with the other modifications to the setbacks and everything? Modification for air-conditioned heating unit setbacks to 1.5 feet. That means they'd be maybe about three feet apart. That means two houses would be only 10 feet apart. I thought when we made plan development that it was supposed to make a superior product. I don't really see this crowding making a superior product. It is not allowed in other areas of the city, and I don't really think we should keep granting these proposed modifications just because it's going to be a planned development. I think it's just crowding it too much. And I don't see where it's going to enhance Daytona Beach.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions about this or any other comments? No? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign.
No.
No.
Okay. Motion carries five two.
Moving on to item 9C. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timber Creek Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, in relation to 61.4 plus or minus acres of property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of LPJ Boulevard and Tournament Drive, amending the future land use of 11.3 plus or minus acres section of the subject property from Level 1 residential to mixed use, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood T, development policy, limiting commercial development on the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor-
I do have a speaker-
Nope, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's Javier Carabusha, and please forgive me for mispronouncing your name.
And Tish, isn't this the one where we had the email comment?
Yes.
As well?
From 228 Gala Circle?
Yep. Hi, my name is Javier Carabusha. I live at 228 Gala Circle, very near where this new construction is going to happen. I'm just a concerned citizen, and I live so close to where this construction is going to happen. It just, I have kids in the house, and I don't, I don't know, I fear what, what are they going to put in there, so close to our house, and just behind it is these beautiful woods and stuff, and I, it just, it hurts my heart to like, just have them come and just develop that, just to make it all commercial and stuff. I just wanted to come and put in my two cents about this. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for this item, and I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Is this a letter from another gentleman called Stephen Kirsten? This is on the same subject, I believe, and he's very concerned about the wetlands being indicated in one place and maybe not in another.
Had to do with some confusion in respect to an old map and a new map. We've been on the phone with him as well as communicated in writing. His concerns have been satisfied.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Jim, just to clarify, that was-
Excuse me, I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. Apologize.
And Jim, you pointed out a conflict between the two maps, and there was a map where the designation of a wetland inventory was not identified.
It was not appropriately identified.
Right.
There was one in the vicinity, and when you look at the land use map, you'll see it underlaid. It's correctly located on those maps, and the gentleman was satisfied with the answers and the information that he received. So it's all been corrected. Your record now is correct.
So the wetlands will stay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
They're in conservation.
Thank you.
There will be some that are permitted that aren't in the conservation designation. I'm sure there will be some of that, but the swath that you see identified on the map is a conservation designation. Those will stay. It's a part of the Temoca River overlay, and they are preserved as part of the-
Now, the parts that will stay there, the same size as the parts on the old map, or have they been diminished?
It's the same. No, it's the same.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Rob, I got one question for you. The, I know we're not there yet, but as far as buffering between this development and the residential development adjacent to it, what is the plan there?
Just to keep our compartments, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Just to keep our compartment straight, this is the future land use request is before you right now. I can talk to you about the development plan, which I think he was alluding to, but in this case, if you'll look at your staff report, this is very clearly a reduction in what's allowed there now in terms of the intensity, primarily of the commercial portions of this. So it's a reduction. There'll be less traffic. There's going to be less environmental impacts or any other impacts for that matter, utilities. So on this item that's before you, that was just moved for approval, it's simply, you know, a reconfiguration of what's allowed in the future land use to reduce significantly the commercial that's allowed and allow the residential to counterbalance it. So, and to your question, Rob, I'll let Jessica give you the numbers on it, but that's the next item. If you, if we can weigh it, probably better.
But since the speaker spoke on this one, even though we were jumping the gun before we voted on this, I thought it'd be nice if we answered his question, let him know that we are going to make, there will be consideration about making sure that this doesn't have an undue negative impact on the existing residential neighborhood.
And there are some wetlands there that are preserved as well that provide buffer. So yes, both buffer required and buffer naturally there is, I think, the easy answer. But in terms of spacing, I think Jessica Parker can give you the numbers, Rob.
Yeah, absolutely. For the record, Jessica Gao, Cobco Law Firm. We are not requesting waiver from the Land Development Code requirements for buffers between potentially incompatible uses. So if there was the residential and then there were commercial, it would require an opaque buffer. It could be 5, 10, or 15 feet under the Land Development Code regulations. That's a planted buffer, and that has to fully screen the incompatible use from view.
And so we have a possibility of different uses because of the mixture that's allowed on the mixed use existing. And so the answer about the buffer depends on what we actually decide to build, so.
Right.
But they're by code. So again, you know, to your point, Ruth, this one is exactly by code as that relates to that question.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
All right, we have no more, no further questions. We have a motion, we have a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item number 9D, it's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timber Creek Creek zoning, an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 61.4 plus or minus acres of property located at the northeast intersection of LPJ Boulevard and Tournament Drive from SFR 5, Single Family Residential 5, to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the Timber Creek Plan District Agreement, allowing the property to be developed with mixed residential and commercial uses, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I don't have any speakers, but I do have Mr. Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Merrill?
I just have one. Mr. Merrill, you're saying that you haven't quite decided what's going to be developed there yet. Am I correct?
Right, so in this PD, it's got opportunity for residential and, you know, a mixture of uses that are allowed under the mixed use, land use. Keep in mind, Commissioner, this is directly across from the Public Shopping Center at Margaritaville, so this is definitely, you know, an area that's got a lot of activity going on, so that's the reason why this is coming forward with a request to develop it.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9E. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Sun Glow Mini Storage Voluntary Annexation. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance annexing into the city of Daytona Beach 3.3 plus or minus acres of property located at 1378 Taylor Street, north of LPJ Boulevard and west of Wesley Street, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 5 of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any speakers?
I do have a speaker, Sandra Borges, to speak on this item, and then I have Joey Posey on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions. Here she comes.
My name is Sandra Burgess. I live at 1409 Primrose Lane. I've lived there almost 54 years, and I am here to oppose the annexation of the three acres at 1378 Taylor Road for commercial purposes. This property is in an isolated area in the middle of single-family dwellings, and it would be nice to keep it that way. Putting in commercial property there will bring crime and traffic. You're going to be putting in tons of concrete, acres of commercial buildings in a residential area. Thank you.
That was my only speaker, and I do have Mr. Joey Posey here for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item 9F. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Sun Glow Mini Storage Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 13.4 plus or minus acres of land located north of LPJ Boulevard and west of Wesley Street, from city Level 2 residential and Volusia County urban low intensity to city mixed use, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood K, development policy, to allow for the development of the land referenced above as a mixed-use commercial storage, subject to conditions designed to limit the impact of such use on nearby residential developments, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
I have no speakers for this item.
I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just trying to remember something. Did you have any kind of, and I'm looking through my packet and I don't remember seeing it, do you have any kind of design element as to what this is going to look like in the context of the community at all? Were you able to hear?
South Nova, Daytona Beach, attorney for the applicant. In terms of the design of the mini storage itself, is that what the question is directed to?
Yeah.
Other than, no, to be honest with you, no, there wasn't really a discussion in terms of nailing down what the actual design is. You know, obviously, we want to be, you know, conscious of the neighbors and try to do something that isn't going to be an eyesore, and you know, part of what we were considering is there's, you know, the huge buffer that we tried to incorporate as part of this where, you know, there's a 40-foot buffer in terms of adjacent to it. Like, we don't want people seeing this. It's not, we're not, we're not there to be an eyesore either. So in that regard, yes, we did consider trying to design around the neighbors, but specifics as to what criteria, we just haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, no further questions? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 9G. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to the Halifax Habitat PD Agreement and PDG's rezoning for Sun Glow Mini Storage. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 12.9 plus or minus acres of property located approximately 500 feet north of the intersection of LPJ Boulevard and Jimmy Ann Drive, Wesley Street, from PDG Plan Development General, MFR 12, Multi-Family Residential 12, and Volusia County R4, Urban Single Family Residential, to PDG Plan Development General District, approving the Second Amendment to the amended and restated Halifax Habitat Village Plan District Agreement, removing a portion of the subject property from the Halifax Habitat Village Plan District, approving the Sun Glow Mini Storage Complex Plan District Agreement, authorizing the subject property to be developed with self-storage, mini warehouse, and office uses, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the above referenced documents, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances to the extent of the conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Okay, do we have any speakers?
I don't have any speakers for this item, and I do have Mr. Joey Posey here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Posey?
I have a question. Mr. Posey, having heard from one of the residents of this neighborhood, do you propose to try to ease their mind by perhaps showing them once the design is finalized on what it all you propose to do?
Again, Joey Posey, 420 South Nova, attorney for the applicant. I am more than happy to, and I'm happy to go on the record that you're more than welcome to reach out to me personally, at the office, via email. I try to be as responsive as possible, and you know, there may have been folks that maybe didn't be, weren't able to get to the neighborhood meeting because we had a lot of those designs, but once we're finalized and we're ready to grow, please get in touch with me if you're a neighbor out there that's curious. I just actually spoke to one person on my way in who is a little curious and just easing general concerns because I, you know, I have all the information, so I'm more than happy to take care of that.
The person you spoke to, is that the lady that spoke to us?
No, there was another, there was another lady just outside, and she may still be in the audience, but I did not get a chance to speak with this neighbor, and I didn't realize that there was another neighbor here, too.
I guess the general concern is the phrase, a big cement box in the middle of a neighborhood.
of a neighborhood" doesn't sound appealing. I mean, I have seen some structures that are in neighborhoods or are in, in commercial corridors, but they're done decoratively, they're done with an appreciation for the residents and for the existing surroundings and their architecture and their lines, and so my request would be that that actually takes place and that it's not just a big empty box. I do, however, understand that a lot of families have a lot of storage needs.
Yeah.
I myself have that need, and so, and I'm always paying for storage somewhere, but I can see how it also fill a need for the community as well, but just try to keep that in mind as well, please.
It will do, and I appreciate the comment.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further questions, we'll have a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number ten, which is our administrative items. Item number ten A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Walker's Green Community Development District, CDD. This is an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance granting the petition of Masgro Land LP for the establishment of the community development district, creating and establishing Walker's Green Community Development District, providing for name, powers, and duties, providing description and boundaries, providing initial members of the Board of Supervisors, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, ordinance on first read. Do we have any questions? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for September ninth. Okay, we're going to move on to item number ten D. It's the Finance Department, Truist Bank and FLC Capital Financing Master Lease Agreement Approval. This is an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement with Truist Bank sponsored by the Florida League of Cities, Inc., authorizing the lease purchase financing of the acquisition and installation of certain equipment herein described, authorizing the execution and the delivery of an acquisition fund agreement, authorizing the execution of such other documents as may be necessary to complete the transactions completed hereby, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for September ninth. Moving on to item ten C. It's the Police Department Amendment to Municipal Ordinance, Chapter ninety-four, Traffic and Motor Vehicles. This is an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance amending Article eight, Bicycles of Chapter ninety-four City Code, to establish operating and parking requirements for motorized scooters and motorized bicycles, requiring a city franchise agreement for micro-mobility device providers, providing for impoundment and penalties, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think we all got an email from a gentleman who has an electric bike store over on Seabreeze, and, you know, we're, I'm still having trouble getting my head around, you know, the scooters are a problem. You know, I don't think we have a problem with electric bikes, and we have existing businesses, not just this one gentleman, and I'm trying to make sure that what we're doing isn't going to create an additional burden, particularly upon the existing businesses that are, that are in Daytona Beach. So Bob, this does apply to electric bicycles, correct?
The way it is drafted, it does apply to electric bicycles as well as electric scooters.
So, and then the, the franchise agreement would be, we would have to award franchise agreements to all the people that rent electric bicycles at this point, correct?
That's correct.
And could you just walk through that, that process?
Sure. The, the process in general, looking at other jurisdictions, would be to issue an RFP for franchising those operations. There'd be negotiations with those entities, and then we'd enter into a very detailed franchise agreement with one or more providers, be it for scooters or motorized bicycles, and that agreement would come back to you for approval. The agreement would contain details such as how to establish and set up either corrals or docking stations for the devices, of course, insurance and indemnification, number of units, multitude of various details in terms of the micro-mobility device operator.
So my concern is with Commissioner Gilliland, because this particular, the e-bike stores are in Zone Three, and so I've been going back and forth trying to find a way to, to work with the, with the motorized scooters, and trying to keep in mind the e-bike people who have had no problems, no complaints, have a solid brick and mortar business without any issues. I continue to get complaints about the mopeds. This continues, sorry, the motorized scooters, I continue to get complaints, I continue to get pictures, but that does not happen with the e-bikes. Is there any way, and I also provided you all with a little bit of a, little informational research on the difference between e-bikes, their safety versus the scooters, and there is a big difference. So I guess, is there a way that we can separate them? The difference being that we allow one but not the other, is that a possibility?
It is certainly a possibility. I did review the article which you passed out tonight, and it, you know, there are distinctions to be made between motorized bicycles and motorized scooters in terms of their center of gravity, the size of their wheel, the type of wheel, so there is certainly a justification for regulating motorized scooters over motorized bicycles, which we would need to articulate and, and depend on the information provided tonight as well.
And one other thing was that I noticed that we did not make, unless I missed it, did not make specific mention to the boardwalk in our, in our ordinance.
So there are, there are two sections in the ordinance. The first is the franchise requirement. The second is the general use requirement. So the motorized scooters would not be allowed in any pedestrian walkway. Now, I could be more specific if you like on second reading and write in boardwalk, but even as drafted, there'd be no interpretation which would allow them on the boardwalk.
Okay, and so just so I'm clear, as I was reading it, it states that they can be on sidewalks in residential areas.
No, that's, that's for bicycles now.
That's bicycle.
That's bicycles, that is your current regulation. I did not change your current regulations with regard to bicycles.
All right.
What I added with regard to motorized scooters and motorized bicycles is that they would be prohibited on all pedestrian walkways and sidewalks, so they are prohibited. They would be allowed on roadways within the bike lanes, or if there is no bike lane on roadways that have a speed limit of under thirty miles per hour.
And so I guess part of my concern is that I can see in the future, as we, as our city transforms itself, that we incorporate more bike lanes. I could see in the future them being okay in the, in the bike lanes, in those mobility lanes, but as of right now, A, there's not much room with the traffic and the cars and then the mopeds as well. And as I was reading the safety instructions here, they're harder to see versus a bicycle. Center of gravity is different, tires are different, insurance is different, and there is a lot more liability with them. And so, you know, a few weeks back, the, the way it was headed was that I thought they were, they were attempting to bundle it into, and it's a bicycle, and so therefore the e-bikes were included in that, and I knew that we had e-bike people on beachside who would, they've been there for years, they're doing a safe, safe, safe job, no complaints. They've never left their bicycles on the side of the road, that's never happened, but because they were bundling them along with them, it put them in jeopardy. So that's what part of that conversation was about last week. So that's where I am with it. I'm not sure how you feel about it, but to me, there is a difference.
I agree, there is a difference, at least I believe there is a difference, and I was wondering if there was a way that we could separate the two as well and take motorized bicycles out. We haven't had any problems with those companies, and I don't want them penalized.
So Bob, the, the use part of it, because they're, so I don't think, we don't have a problem today with the use part, because people aren't using motorized bicycles on sidewalks and whatnot. So I don't have a problem with leaving the, the use applying to the electric bicycles, but I think it's, to me, it's more that franchise piece, that I don't want that to apply to the e-bicycle vendors, electric bicycle vendors. And so my, my preference would be, we don't have a problem with it right now, so we just, we have the franchising piece applied to the micro-mobility devices and the motorized scooters, but not the motorized bicycles.
Okay, so my, my concern is that, and...
Hold on, Bob, Bob was winding up there to tell me that was a bad idea.
Yeah. The distinction we're making between the motorized scooters and the motorized bicycles is really based on safety. I can certainly draft it that way. From a legal standpoint, I'm, I'm more comfortable if we treat them consistently. If we're going to pull bicycles out, we should pull it out of the use and the franchise. I don't know how you make a distinction between regulating them in one way for one section and regulating in a different way in a separate section. Not to say it can't be defended, you know, we could certainly draft it that way if that's the will of the commission. You know, my legal preference would be to, to be consistent throughout the ordinance in your treatment, but it's your discretionary decision.
And so that's the conversation that's been going back and forth for a couple of weeks, is how can I get this done? You know, I, I'm not allowed to communicate with any of you, so I'm not sure where we are right now, but I receive, I receive pictures on a daily basis from a vendor down on A1A, and he literally shows me miners on the mopeds, on the, sorry, on the scooters, on the sidewalk. I get pictures, like literally this weekend, it was ding 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 ding, all, all evening long, which I have no problem receiving, but I, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm not sure that, I want us to understand what they're doing to our city right now, and again, we're just not set up for it yet. We don't have enough spaces where they could be put aside yet. It's going to come, I can see them happening in Riverfront Park. I can see that, you know, with the outdoor park, but I'm just having a hard time continuing them, and again, I wish we could separate the bicycles from the scooters and keep the bikes.
Bob, could you delete the scooters altogether from the ordinance and prohibit them?
The commission has the option to prohibit them citywide as well.
And that would solve any discrepancy that might be associated with having two different sections of the...
Again, for the same reasons that you, that you've articulated, that being that the scooters are more dangerous than the bicycles, you could prohibit them citywide.
Would they have to have a brick and mortar store?
The operations would be prohibited.
Because I've heard that there was a truck going around renting them?
Yeah, I've heard that story as well. That, that's an unlawful use of right-of-way under your current code.
Also, if someone got hurt, who would be in the hot seat? Us?
So again, the, the franchise agreement addresses those issues. If someone's hurt, obviously, they can sue anyone they feel is responsible. We would hope to cover those liability issues in the franchise agreement so that they're required to maintain insurance, to name us as additional insured, and to indemnify us against those types of claims. So that is a benefit of having a franchise agreement, whether it's a scooter or a bicycle. If someone hits a, if someone runs over the curb or something and gets hurt, we may be able to claim coverage under the provider's insurance.
What about those who do not have a brick and mortar structure who are more or less freelance?
So again, your franchise agreement would cover all those details in terms of where they're allowed to park, where they operate out of, whether they can be point-to-point or from a point of beginning and then returning to the point of beginning. So those are details that we'd need to work out individually through the RFP process.
And what about if they rent to another city and then come into our city?
If somebody comes into your city, they would still have to comply with your operator requirements.
So would they have to have franchise from Daytona Beach?
Not if they're, if they're renting from outside of the city, they would not have to have a franchise with Daytona, but they would have to comply with your operator.
And who would have the liability if someone was hurt?
Again, it'd generally be the, the city and the provider would get sued, and we would try to address those issues in the franchise agreement for those that have a franchise within the city. We get sued constantly for potholes that cars run into, I mean, any, any additional vehicles on your roadways is an opportunity for, for a lawsuit or a liability, where, where the city's found to be negligent.
Bob, if we, if we did a citywide prohibition, we would still be in the same situation because they were leased outside the city and brought in, you know, ridden into the city.
If, if they're prohibited in the city, they would be subject to a citation, so it's the use that's prohibited.
But the, would we still have liability?
If they're here illegally, if it's foreseeable, you know, there's always a claim to be made. If it's an illegal use, certainly our chances are, are better in prevailing in that suit.
Do you, do you see any upside for the city on this law?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
I think that's really a question better suited for either management or the commission. I, I assume there are economic advantages to the city, but I, I'm not in a position to answer that.
From, from my perspective, I don't really see the financial advantages to the city in any, any way that has any significant impact, nor do I see the necessity, because there are other means of transportation available that, that is currently regulated, so I guess the policy decision is, do you want to add another means of transportation to the city's system?
So Commissioner May, state again which one it is that you do want and which one you don't want.
We right now have the e-bikes, and they are running a state sound business, they have for years.
No issues, no complaints, no problems. They go around Daytona Beach, no complaints filed against them.
That's not a scene though. What does an e-bike look like?
It's an e-bike.
Electrical bike.
It's an electrical bike. Yeah, but they've been around for a while, brick and mortar business. You sort of pedal it if you need to, and you don't pedal it if you don't need to, right?
So they have little motors on them?
And you, if you rent it, they not only rent them, they sell them. They're an actual retail shop, and if you want to rent them, you can rent them, but it's in the building, everything happens right there with the store owner, et cetera.
So it's the scooters that y'all have an issue with?
Yeah.
I don't really have.
I'm sorry?
The scooters.
And what about them?
That's where the issue is.
The issue is the scooters, yes. And it became an issue because they were bundling themselves under the bikes.
So I think, I think we sort of have two choices. Either we ban scooters citywide and then just leave it as it is today, or we remove the, the electric or motorized bicycles from this ordinance so that they aren't impacted by the safety precautions that are trying to go into place for the scooters.
Okay, so let me discuss this. Sometimes we're accused of not being, and I have been accused, of not allowing business to do its thing, and my response, or new businesses to do its thing in this particular instance, and my response has been, but it's injuring the existing community, and by injuring, I mean physically injuring them. I mean hitting pedestrians, I mean running over kids, I mean video footage of things like this, right? So that's the first part.
But in both those solutions, that's addressed because they're no longer allowed on sidewalks.
Yes, sort of. When they park, they park on the sidewalks, and oftentimes, it's laying across the sidewalk that's already narrow.
Which would be prohibited by the ordinance.
I recognize that it's a prohibition, but how is that enforced exactly? When it's laid there, because it's not, there's not a person you're returning it to, they're just left, and then you're gone. And so this is now being in front, it's being placed in front of certain businesses on a daily basis. So it's becoming a nuisance, a nuisance and an eyesore. That's where we are with it.
I honestly would go either way on that. I, I am leaning a little bit more towards just removing the motorized bicycles, because we have this problem down in, in your zone primarily, but out on, you know, Zone Five and Zone Four, you know, we've got a lot of multifamily, we're near retail, you know, Volusia Mall, the, the one Daytona, you know, I can see people using a scooter as a means of transportation out there. You know, we've got Bethune-Cookman, Daytona State, Emery Riddle, Kaiser, you know, all of them, you know, have kids that might, you know, live in multifamily in that area and apartment... in an apartment and use the scooter to get back and forth from school. So I'm, I'm more inclined to say, let's remove the motorized bicycle component of this and stick it with the micro mobility and the scooters because clearly, as, as you, you know, demonstrated, based on your article from this law firm, you know, they are very different types of transportation.
Is there any way we could, since we're asking, being creative here, can we take them out of the tourist corridor? Since I recognize the areas that you're referring to are areas that people need to travel distances. So is it possible to not have them in the areas where sidewalks are narrower, or we don't, not even allowed there, now they're in the roadway, with cars who are tourists, who aren't paying attention in the roadway and some places don't have bicycle lanes? Is it possible to have them not be in those areas? And they can be in the residential areas or the university areas or the mall areas. Is that a possibility?
Certainly you can create zones where they would be prohibited. And I think technologically it's even possible because these have some sort of tracking GPS device. They have geo areas, I think they're called.
Geo fencing.
So geo fencing, thank you. So it is, it is possible to draft an ordinance in that way if you have a, a zone where you would not like them to operate. And we could certainly wrap that into either the ordinance or the franchise agreement.
How do you feel about that? Where it's allowed in the residential areas and the areas that you mentioned, but just not in the core tourist areas? And because it's because our sidewalks are so busy, our streets are so busy, we do have so many tourists down there that it becomes a hazard?
I, I agree. You're right. The pedestrian density is completely different on the beachside than it is on the mainland. I'm still kind of thinking through that.
I think the concern would be really traffic congestion and safety for the riders as opposed to pedestrians since they'd already be prohibited on the sidewalks. So if there were areas where the streets were narrow, for instance, that would be an area where perhaps they shouldn't be operating.
I'm almost thinking they're prohibited on the beachside and allowed on the mainland.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
That they'd be prohibited on the beachside and allowed on the mainland.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. Uh-huh.
And that would address my concern about the...
And it would satisfy my business community on beachside.
So what would, what would get lost there would be the folks that, there was, two calls I got from folks, I think they both had hotels that were leasing these things.
Exactly.
And it was an additional revenue stream for them.
I understand that.
So they would lose that additional revenue stream.
I agree.
But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not confident that allowing them at all is something that we can police. So...
And so again, you know, the idea is not that we're trying to dissuade new business or innovative business or cutting edge. It's not what it is. All I'm saying is that right now, the environment that we have down there is not the best suited for this at this particular time. I mean, can we revisit it as that environment changes? 100% we can. But as of right now, that's where I'm sensing we are.
Bob, what do you think about that is prohibiting it on the beachside and making, making it, I still would want to remove motorized bicycles.
On beachside?
From the ordinance.
Yes, so it doesn't affect them? They continue their business as usual?
So the ordinance would only apply, there'd be a, a beachside prohibition, there'd be a mainland set of regulations, including the franchise agreement, that would, you know, not include the motorized bicycles. But I think that would, it would still be allowed at that point.
So they, they would be able to operate as they are right now?
And if you personally owned one, Bob, and you weren't, it wasn't a lease, then the franchise agreement and all that wouldn't apply at all.
Right. So what I would suggest you do is we go ahead and, and put a prohibition into the operating section for use of motorized scooters on the beachside. We'll define that more particularly, but we can certainly include that in the ordinance at your discretion.
All right, so prohibit, prohibit scooters and mo, micro mobility devices on the beachside and remove the motorized bicycle from the ordinance. Is that where we are?
Don't miss any part of it.
So, what do you guys think?
Are you through?
I mean, we can always change it, so.
Didn't we also talk about a sunset on, on trying this?
Yes.
I, I don't...
Yeah.
We talked about that. And my thought was, was to include that sunset or handle it in your franchise agreement. So that your franchise agreement will be a short-term agreement. So because depending on when someone enters into a franchise agreement, it will determine how long they're available, right? So if you put a sunset on it now and we weren't able to do the RFP or there's some delay in, in getting a provider, then it might sunset before anyone had the opportunity to go out and, and test the area. So my suggestion would be to handle, handle that as a short-term program in your franchise agreement.
And I have to bring up one more point. So apparently what we're doing here gained some traction in Orlando and some other cities. And for whatever reason, I was getting emails. I'm not sure if you got the same emails, but I've been getting emails about this. And the email was from a, a bicycle company out of Orlando where they use docking stations and their e-bikes with docking stations. And so while I recognize that it's a bicycle, it's an e-bike, it's allowed on beachside, I'm going to run into possibly the same situation where it's like it's littered across the street. And I just want us to be aware that that might come before us also because it does fall in the category of an e-bike, but it's portable, meaning you can dock it in different places. So do we go into a space of things that are docked are not on beachside? Is that the divide? I'm just bringing it to your attention in case this comes before us again.
You know, we start seeing those, we can, we can address them. But I'm thinking through the sunset piece, which, so we actually may not get anybody that requests a franchise agreement with the city for the mainland. Nobody want to apply for a year. So I see where Bob's going with that.
Yeah, with the new restrictions of them being on the main side, mainland, we probably wouldn't. But who knows? We can address that when the time comes.
Is there really any upside to having this pass that they can do it? Or is it all negative that maybe we ought to just not do it now and see if he comes up in a year or so? Not allow them right now?
So if we did a citywide prohibition and somebody had a privately owned scooter, what would happen, Bob?
They would be subject to citation.
For privately owned?
Yes, it's the operation within the city which would be unlawful.
Because that's a citywide prohibition. Okay, let's go to another one, another option.
It's cheap transportation, you know, and there's a lot of people in this town who need cheap transportation. So, you know, I don't want to do anything that's going to limit.
There's always walking.
So that is true.
And I, I'm just concerned that we're a college town and the, the more popular they become, college students are going to want to use them to get from their apartment to the schools.
And I can see that.
And so altogether out, I don't want to do.
I can see that on the mainland. I've been listening to you two weeks, but I can see students doing it on campus. I'm not sure how the college or university feels about it, but I can see them traveling in those kinds of areas.
It's cheaper than a segue.
100%.
Oh, yeah.
And they're on those little things that they kick and move their little legs now anyway.
Razor, razors.
Yeah. So where are we?
So I think we're prohibiting on the beachside, allowing on the mainland with, under the current agreement, moving, but removing motorized bicycles.
Okay.
I, I will make those corrections and bring that back to you for second reading.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this?
I have a...
We need to...
A motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
Okay.
Okay, so I modify my motion as just described to prohibit the beachside, allow on the mainland, and remove motorized bicycles.
Thank you so much.
Well, Delgado hadn't amended his second.
Commissioner Delgado, amend your second.
I have my second.
Yeah, it's a little bit, he did. Look at his little face.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have any other questions, any other comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries six, one.
The public hearing is set for September 9th. Moving on to item 10D, it's a planning board appointment resolution, a resolution appointing one member to the planning board for a term expiring December 31st, 2022, and providing an effective date. So this item tonight is to appoint one member to the planning board for Zone 3. This is an opening due to a resignation of a member that had a membership term expiring December 31st, 2022, and they have received one application, a William Peugeot. And it's a, Mr. Peugeot is a former, is a current general contractor. He knows planning, he knows development, he knows budgets, he knows estimates, he knows design. He understands how it impacts the community. He's done different projects in the community and he's a respected member in Zone 3. And he's been here for over 20-plus years, 30 years.
Is that a nomination?
Thank you.
Yes.
A second, or, Ruth.
All right, we have a motion. Then we have a second. Any speakers?
I have no speakers for this item.
All right, all those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
We're going to move on to our final item of the evening. This was the item that was added on, item 10E, the city clerk's office declaring Paula R. Reed duly elected. A resolution declaring Paula R. Reed duly elected as commissioner for Zone 6 and providing when this resolution shall take effect.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second.
I have a concern, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
On the background, they have Paul R. Get her, get her A. Paula.
Who's that?
Background.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let me discuss this, sir. This is...
Official certificate says Paula R. Reed.
Let me double check.
All right, we get that, we getting that straightened out on the background?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
And Mr. Mayor, as part of this agenda item, typically we would declare the results of the primary election on this day, but the supervisor of elections has indicated that there may be a recount for the primary. So we are asking that we can call a special meeting to declare the results of the primary on Monday, August 24th, 2020, at 4:30 PM. Under your authority, you would be able to call a meeting.
I'm pretty sure I have a conflict at 4:30.
Okay.
Okay, how about 5:30?
I need a minute.
I have a conflict with 5:30.
We can always pick it, I believe Tuesday was the other option.
What date?
Is there a, Jim, don't you have a workshop you wanted to have next week?
Yeah, it's on Wednesday.
We'd like to, to have one on Wednesday.
Can we do it at the same time? Or is that too long?
We could do it at that time.
What time is the workshop?
Yes, is there a time limit on how long after the election we have to?
Yeah, there is.
What we're trying to comply with here is your charter. So the charter requires that, that this occur within, by noon, the second day after the results have been certified.
Are ascertained, yeah.
So we are trying to meet that timeline in your charter.
So when will the results be available?
We're assuming that'll be Friday or Saturday.
So the earliest that we'd be able to have a meeting would be Monday?
Well, you could have the meeting Monday. It's not going to take long. It's going to take five minutes. You can have it Monday at noon. You know, lunchtime. Just need five people there to verify, you know, or just, what is, we just need a quorum. Monday at noon, okay?
We still are under also the, the governor's order where we can have virtual participation that counts towards our quorum.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we have a commitment for Monday at noon?
I think, I think everybody's agreeable to noon on Monday, Mayor.
Monday?
Okay, all right.
And if anything would change or if they would notify me that there doesn't need to be one, I'll...
What day is that? I mean, what day?
24.
24.
24.
And the supervisor of elections will publicly notice that recount if it happens and provide notification to, to my office as well.
All right, is that it?
That is it.
That's for that. Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we consider having a workshop on the 26th at 5:30 where we can talk about some of the development that's occurring downtown, the Delta Project, as well as a, a location of City Hall and a number of other issues associated with downtown redevelopment.
What time?
5:30.
I have a meeting for the equity workshop from 4 to 5, and then I have a second meeting from 5, which was scheduled to be to 5:30. I probably can end that one though. Can we do it at 5:45?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Let's make it six o'clock.
What day were you talking about?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 26th?
The 26th.
Okay. All right, so Monday we're doing the election piece.
And we can zoom in for that, correct? Go to the sleep tissue?
Yes. I will get with IT to make sure everyone has invitations if they want to zoom in.
Okay.
The 26th is what time?
5:45.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have those, those two days scheduled. Mr. Mayor, it's up to you.
All right, we'll have commission comments. I think we start with Commissioner Gilliland.
Yes.
And Jim, that's that Daytona emerging, the thing you put in our mailbox? Okay. Uh, let's see, da, 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 that's 5:45, the 26th, okay. Yeah, so Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm confident that the recount tomorrow, that we have the same outcome, that we have this resolved and, and for us to have a little more stability if we move forward.
Sorry, my, my mic wasn't on. The, the other thing, and Jim and I had talked about this briefly a week or so ago, and I wasn't able to get in touch with Jim today, but I've been asked to participate in a, a meeting next Thursday with the District 5, FDOT folks and the county to talk about trying to move forward the Timoca River Bridge replacement. And what the, the thought process at this point is to try and get the, the PDNE, the initial study funded, which evidently FDOT has shown some, some interest in, in allowing that to kind of jumpstart the project. This would be, what they would be looking for is the three partners in this, the city, the county, and FDOT, and possibly any private developer that's out in that area to make contributions. So the number that's been thrown out for Daytona would be $250,000 to $500,000. So at this point, we haven't been, I have, have no detail shared with me on where this might go. Jim did share with me last week that we've got some storm on the horizon related to transportation funding and the gas taxes based on, you know, some discussion that happened for, you know, with the cities and the formula for this year. Obviously, we've got the economic consequences of COVID. We're, you know, looking at, you know, kind of, at a... We're, you know, looking at, you know, kind of, at a, a millage rate this year that's slightly below rollback, which hopefully we can even go a little lower. So money, money is tight, but, you know, this would not, would not be inconsistent with our past performance. We put, you know, Orange Avenue was a county road, and we put, you know, over ten million dollars into that. East ISB, State Road, we put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that project. The Dunn Avenue Overpass was, was a county project, and it was primarily funded through stimulus money that came out of the Obama administration, but consolidated Tamoca, the city, and the county all, you know, chipped in, you know, I think we split in thirds what the, the unfunded part of that was. So it's not something where there isn't precedent, but I am frugal. You know, this is not in our jurisdiction, but I do want to, you know, it is a significant problem for the west side of Daytona Beach, and, you know, I would be willing to certainly entertain any sort of proposal that might be brought to us about partnering, and I wanted to throw that out there to see what everybody else thought as to whether it's something, a conversation we should get, should have or not have, or, you know, all for it, all against it, I'm not, I'm, you know, my position is I would be leaning, you know, towards doing it, provided, you know, from a budgeting perspective, we, we could meet the obligation, whichever one of those two amounts it was, either at two fifty or, or five hundred. So I wanted to throw it out there for, for discussion.
Tamoca Bridge, is this the baby bridge on LPGA?
Yeah, right by the auto mall, the two, the old two-lane bridge.
Expand so their street can expand?
So the, the total cost would be, you know, as I understand it, somewhere between twelve and a half and fifteen million dollars. It had been up twenty-five to thirty, I think that was actually for a six-lane bridge, but at this point, you know, we are adding it to the long-range transportation plan next month through the Transportation Planning Organization, which will make it eligible for state funding. The, the state has recognized that they, they still own that bridge, so they're obligated to, to pay for any improvements. You know, however, if we just put it, you know, sit there and wait for it to get in the work program, it might be ten years before anything happens. So this would actually allow an opportunity to jumpstart it, or it would, would shave a number of years off the project completion date, you know, if we were able to form this partnership, you know, and get, get all the parties to make some sort of financial contribution, the lion's share of which would still be FDOT, they would still be on the hook for at least half of the total.
Once you identified the bridge, I was sold. We need to be at the table for that discussion, and we need to help to advance it, and we need to also say how much we're willing to spend, like, put a, you know, a lid on it.
The PD and E number, the, you know, what they, they'd like five hundred. I was, was, that's kind of the same reaction I had. So, you know, but, you know, we, we, we have, you know, we are not in a real strong financial position right now. And that looks like it won't improve anytime in the next, you know, year or two. So, you know, this is sort of like when we went through the Great Recession, you know, we, you know, Jim and, and the administration here has done a good job of, of kind of already preparing for that with, with only filling essential positions, not, not allowing, I know there were some new positions that were being contemplated that had been pulled. Those are the right kind of decisions that should be made, so coming forward with something that is an expenditure right now is hard for me to do, but it's also an opportunity that I don't think we should miss.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I concur, and I'm aware, you know, obviously, you know, the discussions that are forthcoming. But I, I think we're in far better shape than, you know, we would be had we not been rather responsible, I think, over the last few years, and staff has done a good job, and we have not overspent with, you know, added revenue, and we still have more as expected to come. So I, I think this is a no-brainer, and as far as I'm concerned, that bridge is, you know, at the top of the list for infrastructure along with East ISB. So if we had a wish list, I guess there would be one in one, one in one A, one A and one B, whatever you want to call it. So, and it's gonna require something from us, so we have to be prepared to give it, particularly if we're going to continue with, you know, making the improvements, not improvements, but allowing the developments that we approved tonight. You know, we approved, we're approving quite a bit, and by approving those, they, you know, we should be able to pay our portion because we have to, and allow the infrastructure to get backed up. So being at the table is a no-brainer, while we prefer to do it at the lowest amount possible, I would, you know, be on record as saying that we have to be prepared to do what it takes, because that's among the highest priorities for the entire city. So I'm a hundred percent on board. Any objections to this, to, or any negative conversation? I mean, he, he can participate in the meeting at any rate.
I don't want to think of this as a negative conversation, more as a, as a, something that we all know exists, that there are some neighborhoods that would also benefit from some infrastructure decisions as we're making here, as we, you know, we, we look toward the future for the, the new developments that are coming, but then we have, we have areas in, in certain zones, zone threes, zone fives, that need, and you know what, zone one also, right? Zone one also. That, they're all zones that we need, we still need to consider and be respectful of our existing residents, not just the new residents who are coming in. And I appreciate the fact that we're, we're being open-minded to spending some money. I get that it's future and that we're, we're investing in our future, but the present residents, I'd like us to not forget that we have some other infrastructure needs that we should not forget about. That's all.
And I, I agree with you, and we've generally prioritized our capital spending in the older parts of the city. You know, when we spend money on the west side, it's something that we expect to generate additional taxes that will pay for itself at some point, which I think we've been pretty successful in doing that, but, you know, we, three million dollars in general fund for zone three for Peak Street, M L K. in...
Orange Avenue.
In Orange Avenue. You know, we spent about a million bucks on Jimmy Ann, you know, and, and we've been very cognizant of that. Generally, like I said, we, we don't spend money on the west side of town unless it's something that comes with an additional revenue source, you know, and generally increased taxes, maybe some sales tax revenue. You know, this is something I think is, you know, we're, there's always an argument about does development pay for itself? And a lot of the development out there more than pays for itself, particularly something like Margaritaville that's private. You know, our costs in there are, are very, very low, and they pay full taxes. So, you know, but that type of development, you know, we need, the infrastructure's not keeping up with what's happening out there, but, you know, and not to oversimplify, but we're making a profit on the west side that then allows us to have additional funds to spend elsewhere in the city.
Sure, I recognize the need, and I recognize the impact that it will have throughout people traveling, you know, east-west, I recognize that, but it's more just a statement, a position statement of we should still keep everything else in mind as well, but do I think it's an important thing one hundred percent? We don't want things to become dilapidated when we're expanding in that particular area, that's all.
Okay, yeah, and I, I respect that statement personally, but I'm, I'm certainly have to reiterate what Commissioner said, you know, because being one that's been engaged in a campaign, that's very often what folks argue, is that, you know, you're giving all of the attention somehow to the, to New Daytona, as some people refer to it as, when the reality of that couldn't, couldn't be more, more fictitious from my perspective, just naming the, the infrastructure improvements that we have, have committed to the more core and more older areas of the city. And certainly, the western part of the city is, as he said, I say they're more than paying for themselves. In fact, I, I'm on record as saying that a large part of the reason why we're in a positive financial situation is because of, you know, what I refer to as responsible growth that hadn't overburdened our police, fire, or, for the most part, not even our infrastructure as of yet, but if we don't begin to make some investment, you have to give some back to that, and it will begin to overtax the infrastructure. So I'm, I'm more than comfortable with giving the emphasis to this particular project.
I'd like to say I understand the perspective, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm, go ahead. No.
I understand the perspective from which both of the commissioners are coming from, and I respect both of your comments. I think we will never forget where we, what we are responsible for, the old and the new. But this problem here, we pretty much caused by adding all of this construction out there. And it's not just so much those homeowners, whenever our families go for games, and football games, and Bethune Goodman Games, and the residents are trying to go to work and from work, that two-lane is just not doing, it's just not sufficing. Traffic is backed up for miles for us to try to go, and that's become a major thoroughfare, you know, for us to get to ninety-five and to get back to ninety-two. So it's just that you've got the high school, Father Lopez is out there as well, so yes, we, we need to do something, and yes, we need to remain cognizant of those that, that have always been here as well. And these are new residents too, we need to, you know, just kind of try to balance as best we can.
And keep in mind that that bridge is right to zone five, so it backs up to that zone as well, so it greatly would benefit from, from that, the traffic over in that area, as I've been saying, with the growth, it's, it's been unbearable on most days, so I'm one hundred percent behind looking to see if something can be done to alleviate some of that for both of those areas. And there is so much growth coming out there right now, and if you're talking about putting that new subdivision out there with those ten thousand homes, we're gonna have to have some, we're gonna have to relieve some pressure out there on those residents, because it will affect their quality of life, being in traffic, that amount of time, not having enough, that I don't believe we have enough stoplights over in that area. We're gonna have to look at some other alternatives over there as well. It will help.
I teared up a little bit when Paula talked about going to a football game.
Yeah, me too.
Going to a football game.
We can't.
Yeah, we can't, we don't do that anymore.
No.
Back in the day.
Well, we're, and I'm not looking for a decision tonight, I just want to see if anybody was, you know, really, had a, had a, had a viewpoint very different from mine, and Jim is, you know, I'm kind of put him in a, in the hot seat here, because he and I talked about this and, last week, and, you know, we got, we got, we need to be very cautious as the stewards of the taxpayers' money. So, but I will attend the meeting next Thursday, and I will report back at our meeting two weeks from today. And that is all I had, thank you.
All right, excellent, excellent comment, and thank you for, once again, taking the lead on another very necessary city infrastructure project.
Happy to...
Commissioner Henry?
Congratulations to Paula. Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Happy to be serving with you again. I only have one concern tonight, and that, my concern, Mr. Mayor, is that we are allowing certain sports at our facilities, and certain sports we are not allowing, and that tends to cause a problem because it makes it seem that we're being unfair. I, I think that we need to discuss what sports we're going to, what activities we are going to allow at our city facilities, and then what activities we're not going to allow, and then let our residents know why we've made that decision. So at the Snebley Center, we have gymnastics is allowed, and then at the Midtown and I think Dickerson, swimming is allowed, but then we're not allowing other sports and other activities in, in the community. So if we're not going to allow those activities, we need to say, these are the activities that we're going to allow, and this is why we're going to allow these activities, we're not purposely excluding other people, others out of using the facilities for certain activities, and this is why we're allowing certain things. I've gotten at least ten calls this week regarding that, and I, I didn't have answers, and it felt uncomfortable having, not having answers and being able to say, well, yes, we're allowing swimming, but we're not allowing this, because in the last meeting, we said we weren't allowing anything in our, in our, besides swimming, in our facilities.
Well, all sports are not alike. I mean, there's close contact sports, and there's sports that do not involve close contact, and I think that should be more or less a criteria.
Understandably so, but I think even with the criteria, we need to be able to say that there are certain things that we're going to allow, because in the last meeting, it was we weren't going to, that facilities were closed, that we weren't going to allow certain things. So I, I just want a standard statement or a standard look that says this is what it is and this is what it isn't, or that's what I, I'm getting calls for.
Okay, and that's, that's, that's correct. I, I have noticed a lot of concerns from residents on this issue, and it was on my list also. So what I think we need is a standard for what is permissible, a permissible use of city facilities. The first thing I would say, if it were, if it were me, that we should say which activities are controlled by city staff. Does city staff manage the swimming pool when people are in it? Who's managing the gymnastics? And the second thing is, I think that any activity in, that we do agree to allow, has to meet a certain standard in terms of physical distancing. You know, while, you know, I would be the first to say that I didn't think that contact with tackle football should be allowed, that doesn't mean that there's not a circumstance under which that someone couldn't execute some form of, of football activities that maybe taught young men how to play the game without having contact. Now, I know what ends up happening is that there's a lot of, a lot of sort of ambiguity in, well, who, who's making this decision? So I guess we should ask staff to maybe give us some sort of, help us with some standards that we could say that this is what would be allowed, and, but I, I think by and large, it should be, our facilities should be sort of under the control of city staff, so that we can regulate that they are actually, you know, governing themselves according to the standards that we have. And so I, I know that's a mouthful, but that's, I've been giving some thought to this, so that's kind of where I am. But I think staff is gonna have to give us a recommendation as to how we can have some standards, and I think this should go across the board, not just for this, it has to be like, we had a funeral for a beloved community icon, or a, you know, well, there's, there are other people who need to be able to use the facility for the same sort of thing. And that particular funeral, or Norma Blain, I don't know if it was a funeral, but a memorial, was perfectly executed from a physical, physically, socially-distanced perspective. And that is, that's why, you know, we can't just shut down as a city, we still have to do things, but we have to make sure that we're executing it according to the highest COVID standards that I think that we as a commission have been mandated, which has to be, you know, we have a high standard, it seems to be higher than the communities that are adjacent to us, but I would rather us keep that standard, because as we begin to see the numbers go down, I like to think it's because we have communities across the nation, in Florida particularly, that are helping to contribute to some of that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just in response, we'll, we will provide some, some guidance and recommendations to be used in the programs that the city allows in its facilities, and get a recommendation back to the commission.
Okay, thank you. You have any other comments on that issue? All right, Commissioner Henry?
That's it.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, takes one off my list. Commissioner Rea?
Yes, sir, if I may, I'm piggyback on that same topic, my Mr. Manager, we're still waiting to find out what we're doing with the pool and the, the contract with that organization. All righty. This evening, we, on our consent agenda, we approved the grounds and maintenance property, and we have a note here tonight to us regarding a property that's overgrown that we need to address, I can give this to you. It's, it says, "What a disgrace, eight-one-eight, the entrance to Daytona Beach from the north on the beautiful ocean, the property between the Aleki Towers and Island something, Crown, is a complete mess." And so if you were to... And so if you were to address that. And then I also have an email, and I know these people personally. They are employees at Embry-Riddle Doctors, Richard and Mary Snow. And they have an email here regarding four hundred South Atlantic Avenue and a picture. But my password is expired, so I can't send it to you.
We've already.
Wasn't one of them addressed? It was already cleaned up?
Okay, great.
Excuse me. Oh, okay.
All righty. Also, um, when we were here last, we talked about Bike Toberfest. Do we not have a plan yet from them on what they'd like to do to try to still have that?
We, we have something, we don't think it's sufficient right now, but we'll let Jim address that.
Mr. City Manager, we did get a draft document, some of them. We reviewed it and made comments on it.
We're gonna send comments back to the C V B tomorrow. And it is, there's a lot of work to be done to it yet. The intention would be to have, if there is a plan the commission could consider, at your September ninth meeting. So we're trying to work towards an agenda deadline to meet the September nine meeting. And it wouldn't have been able to be here tonight. They didn't have time to formulate it. They delivered it yesterday. We've reviewed it and written comments. Drew's written comments. We're gonna consolidate those and communicate those back tomorrow. So three of us are working on responding to the plan. And we already have draft responses. We just need to finalize, and we will publish them tomorrow. But we did receive the plan.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And something else you said, but this isn't addressing you. This would be for the clerk. There was a change in our scheduling for September, so it's not the first and the third. It's the second. So that's why you said September ninth.
Yes.
I need to mark that accordingly.
It'll be the second Wednesday and the fourth Wednesday. And that's due to the Florida statutes and the budget hearings.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Glad that we approved the, um, the Dickerson Center's Campbell Pool Facilities and improvements at the Dickerson Center tonight. It's been long overdue there. And I just want you all to know, you know, we have, we have approved a lot of properties being built. And I've only heard one property that said they're gonna do some kind of workforce or affordable housing in the midst of, of their, um, their, their building. And I'm gonna tell you now, I'm not gonna keep saying yeah to all these people that are coming, and they're not considering everybody. I think we need to really, really get serious about all this growth and that it would be mixed. That's, our city is mixed. So we need to say that if you're gonna build something, there needs to be a certain percentage of the houses that you're building that can be affordable for someone else. That's just gonna help people rise up from the condi- conditions from which they're in. So I think we need to consider that. And we need to also consider, um, being accountable for them for hiring local folks so that the money stays here. So we've, we've talked about these things several times, but I think it's time to get serious. And then also, I'd like to piggyback on, um, Mr. Mayor. That was a beautiful service, uh, for Norma Bland. Commissioner Henry spoke. The mayor spoke. We had a, a proclamation from the city. Cynthia Slater and N double A C P did a beautiful job recognizing her, and I was proud to be there myself. Those conclude my comments.
Let me, let me go ahead and jump in right there. I'm sorry to the others, but since she's, uh, mentioned it, I may as well address it now. Uh, affordable housing, um, um, you know, I asked the city manager and the city attorney to bring us a, something back about a month ago, and, and you guys still hadn't been able to do that. And I realized that the, the law has changed as it relates to the requirement for development to, uh, contribute to, um, affordable housing. However, uh, it's still possible. So with Commissioner Reed's statement, Commissioner Henry's previous statement, I'm gonna ask you guys to go ahead and make that happen, you know, uh, in, for the next meeting somehow. Because otherwise, I think it's incumbent upon us to go ahead and suspend the approvals of any more development because we're wasted, we're losing time. And I'm just gonna go ahead and take just a moment. This is a part of my discussion tonight, and the most important part from my perspective. We're losing time. When I, when I was elected, you know, in, in eight years ago, the faucet for Daytona Beach was just getting ready to be turned on in terms of our ability to attract people to the community. And what I mean by that is that really prior to that time, you know, we were in a recession. And then before that recession, you know, we had a, a, a city that really said no to most things or to too many things from my perspective. And we lost out on a lot of good opportunities that would have, you know, expanded our, our tax base, uh, widened our communities, opportunities for participation in, you know, different types of activities, made us a more dynamic community. Well, we were the community that people just didn't want to visit, uh, as it relates to the investment community. Because we fought about everything and pretty much said no to everything. And, you know, we still have a, a, a certain minority, uh, population of our community that still wants to say no to everything. Well, we've said yes now for eight years. So that's what I mean when I say we turned the faucet on. We turned it on for the last eight years, and now we are beginning to reap the, some of the benefits from that. But, you know, we are now a more desirable, uh, destination. So we can know, we cannot wait any longer, um, to get this, uh, brought before this commission for us to make a decision on because we're saying outright that we want to be able to compel the development community as it relates to the residential development community, that they will help us to pay for more affordable, um, workforce type housing. We can't approve four and five hundred units at a time or two hundred units and not get any of it back, going back towards affordable housing. Because this need is only gonna be more pronounced, uh, with the failing economy. Well, I won't say failing, but we'll use another word, say the, uh, struggling economy, along with the fact that we're not attracting as many high-end jobs as we would like and the simple reality that we are, we remain a tourist-driven, uh, rather service-driven economy. It's been said that Volusia County needs sixteen thousand, um, units. And our, um, therefore, I think the, the number that Daytona Beach would be required in that is, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten percent of that amount. So we need to have a goal that says that in the next ten years, you know, I don't know what the rest of the county is gonna do. But we need to have a goal that says that we're gonna add sixteen hundred units in ten years. And I realize that we are in a financial pickle, but in order to ha- to achieve that goal, we have to set the standard right now. So, um, with, given what she said, given what Commissioner Henry said earlier this month, is, is this something that, you know, we as a commission, I know that two of them have stated it. I'm stating it. Is this something that we can, uh, expect, uh, staff to bring to us by the next meeting? And I, I need at least one other person to concur with that. And unless the two of them don't occur, which I, I don't want to speak for anybody. But we need to, to push, uh, and demand that this come, come before us.
Mr. Mayor, if, if, if I can, let's, let's not forget how fragile the residential community, residential development community is in Daytona Beach. We saw the second half of Margaritaville collapse because of the additional costs that were put upon them. If you try and put a burden on the developers, they're gonna invest somewhere else. You know, I, I agree, we have a problem. I agree, we need a solution. The Clyde Morris Project is evident. They're gonna come to us and ask for, for us to rebate some of the property taxes because they can't make the numbers work. You know, this is a problem that is significantly larger than Daytona Beach. You know, we have over half of the affordable units in Volusia County in Daytona Beach already. You know, they're looking at, I think, about four hundred units in that new project on Clyde Morris. You know, I, I believe, you know, uh, they're, they're still working it out at this point. But, you know, what we're, tell, asking a developer to make a contribution towards affordable housing is probably something that is gonna either generate such a small amount, it won't make a significant dent in the problem, or it's gonna cause the project not to happen. You know, we're gonna have to find some other creative way to do it. It seems like this year, we don't have anybody who's going into the, you know, who's come to us to ask for support for a project to go into the Florida Lottery System. Remember, a year ago, we were working on the Madison Cove and the, the project on M L K and the Housing Authority. I thought the Housing Authority was gonna come back with something this year, but I, we haven't heard.
Starting their projects already? Go ahead.
We're, we're working with them on this, this particular issue. And, uh, part of, part of the solution, they're gonna be able to provide for us. But I think Bob's got an interesting, he, he came back with an interesting finding about, uh, how you can encourage the development to, the developers to participate or not participate. And, uh, you wanna kind of expand on that a little bit, Bob?
I, I don't know if I'm, if, um, if now would be the time to do that. I'd, I'd rather do that when we have a prepared, uh, program for you.
We have, just so you know, we have not been sitting around doing nothing. We've been working on both the legal side of this issue. We've worked, uh, with, uh, other agencies to, to try to combine our resources. And, uh, I think Commissioner Gillen is making a good point. There is a point where it's not feasible for a project to come to us if you start extracting or requiring things that are gonna impact their bottom line. And, uh, not every project is well-heeled at this point. There's, there's a certain amount of risk that they take in, in making those investments. And, and you have to, you know, work closely with that. But that aside, there is funding, um, that we're aware of that can be had for these projects. And we're working diligently to try to put that particular part of the picture together. And, uh, we will bring something back to the commission for you to look at. And we'll try to do it in this next, probably can get something back in the next meeting.
And then to continue the conversation the mayor's having, um, in my spare time, I've been doing some research what other jurisdictions have been doing with regard to affordable housing, workforce housing, um, in their communities in conjunction with developers. And so when the presentation occurs, um, I'm happy to bring forth some ideas that, um, have been working in different areas as well. And maybe we just sort of pool our concepts and come up with something greater than the sum of the parts, right?
I also had a conversation with Jeanette Dur. As you know, was the representative for Beneficial when they came before us. But I think you might be trying to look at something in that area as well. Beneficial has been told that, that the, the agencies that came before the, um, state are going to be allowed to present three of their, their top projects. And they want M L K Lofts to be a top project of theirs. So they may be coming back to us again to ask for us to consider them as, um, uh, to get the vote that they have the support of the city, uh, in building something at M L K Lofts. So, sounds like we've got some irons in the fire.
I too have been speaking with a company, um, and they've developed, um, affordable workforce housing over in Orlando, um, using the Sodarsky funds. And this particular company is looking at an area, um, over in the Derbyshire area. And they've presented a, a, a nice presentation too. So I, I would like to, for them to be able to tell us more about their project as well.
And I've also asked for, um, maps of the properties that are in Zone Six that are city-owned, um, that are also within the opportunity zone, um, and in the C R A so that we could see if there's any continuity of those properties so that something could be done. I think that, um, we're no longer considering, uh, the, the property at the corner of Orange Avenue to Maylie to, um, Caroline to Gene. At one point, that's where, uh.
Soldier on.
Soldier on.
Sergeant, yeah, was going. So that's, I mean, if we're gonna build that there, we could build something else there just as easily. So, um, I've been talking to a couple of developers as well. One group out of Miami and another group out of St. Pete.
We have a, we have someone that's also looking at those, those folk, those properties.
Good. Very good. Let's go to work.
The companies that do this for a living, and they understand how the tax credit systems work, and there's this four percent fund that you can kind of get pretty easily. There's this nine percent thing, which is that lottery process. You know, I mean, it's, 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 it's pretty complicated. But the people who do it, they, they've, they've figured out the formula to be able to build these things. And, you know, certainly engaging all of those people that we can is, is something that I don't think anybody, anybody would not support. You know, I just want us to be cautious of saying, hey, there's a bunch of people building houses. Let's go charge them, you know, X number of dollars per rooftop to, to, you know, that they have to put into some fund because it won't, won't take much for that to collapse just like Margaritaville Phase Two did.
And I understand your concern, Rob, but as the manager has indicated, Rob has found some means in which it's been done, and it's been done in other cities. And if they don't wanna do it, we can tell them to go somewhere else. They don't have to come to Daytona.
If you want to turn the faucet off, then we.
That's not turning the faucet off. That's just turning that, that particular leaky voice off. I mean, we've got more than enough building that's, that's taking place. I've gone to Florida League of Cities, and Daytona has shined. Our staff has been able to shine how we're this great city to come to and all the building that we've gotten done. We've got a reputation out there. So if they come, let, if they wanna come, they will come. We'll be able to negotiate something. But I know you always gotta bring that procrastination side, so I'm all right.
So I'm. It's called, it's called reality, by the.
I'm going.
Yes. So I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get.
All right.
I'm actually going to concur with, I'm just gonna make a statement that the last time we had a conversation that was leaning toward, uh, you know, putting the stop on development, I got calls, um, from Tampa asking, were we serious? And because they're actually paying attention to what we're doing down here from a development position. People are paying attention to what we're saying at our commission meetings.
We're lucky, Miss, though, is continuing to invest in Daytona because they are getting everything handed to them on a silver platter up in the Panhandle for that St. Joe project. They aren't paying anything. And down here, they're paying tons. So, I mean, the fact that they're continuing to show interest in Daytona is great, but it would take very, very little to convince them to stop and spend that money in Hilton Head or, or up in the Panhandle.
No, they're not gonna just stop, Rob. They're, they're making money, and that's why they're continuing to do it. So I don't agree. They're just not gonna, they're not gonna just stop.
They can make a lot more, they can make a bigger profit up there. They will invest up there.
No, no, they're not even selling like they are here. This is, you know, it, we're a desirable destination. But I'm not suggesting that we turn the faucet off. But the time is now to require, and, and, and it's happening in other places. So I just feel like it's time for staff to bring us something. We've been talking about this for two years or more. So the time is now to, for them to bring us something for us to make a decision on. And so I'm, I know you guys haven't been, uh, twiddling your thumbs because neither of you do that when we ask you to do something. I just felt tonight was the night that I needed to say that we, we're ready to see something because it's that important. It's the, it, it, it's the greatest need in our community right now. And it's not gonna go away, and we're, we're not gonna be able to hide from it. And every one of these proposals that comes before us, we need to try to figure out a way to make them happen if we can. They need to be a, a pressing priority. Anything else, I, Rob, I don't wanna, you know, because this is more of a discussion on this item, and I don't wanna stop anybody from talking about it.
I, I, I just think we need to focus on working with these, with the partners who are professionals in this area. And there may be something in a very small, you know, magnitude that we can do with folks that are looking at, at investing in Daytona Beach. But, you know, to, to generate the kind of money that we're talking about, you know, it's, it, I, I'm not sure we will, we will be able to get to that point. You know, what happened with Margaritaville was when they figured out where they needed with price point, they figured they couldn't sell those houses in Daytona Beach anymore. You know, so it wasn't they were making a profit. It was that, that they were, the additional burden, that public burden is being placed upon them, priced the units outside of what people would pay to live in Daytona Beach. So the, it's, it, the profitability piece of it is, is apart, but it's also a part of the market, you know, and, and what the market can bear for a residential unit.
That's not necessarily true. They wanna sell a, a unit, uh, more units because that's not what's going on over in Mosaic, uh, which is selling at a higher price point. So sometimes you have to slow down your price point, um, so that you, and, and, and sell less units at a higher price. But I'm not concerned about, personally, you know, I am concerned, and I want them to continue to be a part of our community and have been supportive of Margaritaville, and we'll continue to be supportive of them. But I, I think the time is now for us to, to have them work with us on solving this problem.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have to agree with, um, Commissioner Gilliland. It perhaps will not all come from, uh, new development. And yes, we do need to, to jump on these potential, potential partnerships as well as our housing authority and any other means. It doesn't have to be just that. I'm just saying that's a means that we need to consider, and we need to, to make that consideration known. That's all I'm saying.
It's a multi-pronged problem, so we need to take it from every angle and try to solve it in every way. That's why I said each one of those, um, issues. So just like the one that Commissioner Henry was referring to, uh, and the one over in Midtown. Well, four hundred and sixty thousand, I think, is the amount that they need, uh, commitment from us to get eighty-four units. units. I talked to the guy today and I said, well, I'd like to see you have it at 100 units and see if you could do it. We, we might, would have to allow greater density for them to get it to that point. But we need the units. So if, if, if we're going to be serious about affordable housing, we have to say this is what our need is. And this is, these are some of the things we're willing to do. We may allow them to have greater density. We may allow, uh, two, saying we'll support two such projects in a year with the hope that we get one and if we get two, we get two of them. But we have to have a goal of how many units we want to procure. And yes, we do have more units than anyone else, but we also have greater need than anyone else. But we have to set a goal and then be willing to, to work towards that goal within a certain amount of time. But it's multi-pronged, it's not just one issue, it's multiple issues.
Mr. Mayor, what was the, what was the $460,000 number you, you mentioned? I, I didn't catch that.
The $460,000 is, is the amount I think that they usually need for us to, for them to be able to get the Sadowski funds.
So they need a, they would need for the city to put in adequate tax dollars and half a million bucks to be able to build 80 units?
Well, there, there are different ways to be able to, just like, it's the same thing that we did with the project on, in Midtown.
Oh, so we give it to them and they pay us back over some amount of time?
There's certain, there's different ways. Now, staff would have to tell you that. It could be even things like our, our TAP funds, you could abate or permit fees, whatever we have to do to get them to that amount to say that that's what we're willing to commit into the project so that the project goes over. And, you know, I'm not, staff's aware of that, that's, it's the same sort of program. These, the Nets talk, the one that the Nets talking about and the one that Paula's talking about, I think they're similar type projects. The one that we approved last year.
Yeah, and that one we lent, we gave them the money and then they paid us back over, over, no, a little short. They originally, yeah, the Dur, Janet Dur, so they originally said 20, but then, then when they saw the Madison Cove was paying back in like five years, they modified their proposal to do it in a shorter amount of time. But actually there wasn't, and, you know, the taxpayers weren't, you know, they, the money was repaid to the city over some amount of time. So, you know, certainly that's not, that, that's not an issue, you know. Now throw in, you know, making a $500,000 contribution, that would be something that would be, we need to think a little harder about. And as I mentioned, you know, we're going to be hearing from Mark Watts over at Cobb Cole about that Clyde Morris project because they're not making the numbers work. So, you know, they're going to be looking for some sort of, you know, public contribution in the form of probably a, a tax abatement, you know, or a tax refund, only on the affordable units. But, you know, they're, they're still sharpening the pencil on that, but, you know, I was questioning why it was taking so long to get this thing moving forward and that was the answer I got, which was not the answer I wanted. You know, but as the mayor said, if we want to get serious about this, we're going to have to think about whether or not that's the kind of thing that we want to, you know, make a commitment to. And if I recall, it was about $60,000 a year that they were off, but it was going to last for about 15 years, you know. But, you know, once again, as a, as sort of a pilot or something to try it to get several hundred units, you know, I think it's a conversation to have.
I'm curious, we're not ever in the conversation. Are we strictly thinking about going for newer units, newer buildings? Is that the concept here versus trying to help our existing communities improve the way they're looking? Is that an option at all or are we just thinking new units?
I said, well, I made, I made to the house. I thought it was, I didn't believe what we said they have now.
Use your mic, Commissioner Reed, use your mic, we can't hear you.
I, I told Commissioner May, I was speaking of both. I even mentioned the housing authority in my disclosure. So, I mean, it says Daytona Beach Housing Authority, they are ours, you know, so we definitely want to assist them in any way that we can.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so do we have any other comments on this? And, and, you know, that item, they've, they've known Commissioner Gilliland for a little while that they, they were going to need to ask for those abatements, as I refer to them. But I'm agreeable to having a discussion about that because that's one of the types of strategies that we have to use if we're going to be serious about, you know, being successful in this area. Okay. Commissioner Trigger, unless you're not done, Commissioner Reed, are you done?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Okay.
We have the Biketoberfest coming up next two months or so. Sturgis just had theirs. And while I realize it's a little bit early to find out how successful it was with the coronavirus, whether they were able to stem, stem that or whether that's going to be a spike in theirs or not, I think we ought to very carefully watch out on if there's a spike in the city of Sturgis, the people who live there. I know that a lot of them, you know, visitors came and they, if they got infected, they took it back to their hometown. But I'm wondering about the town itself, whether they experienced a big spike. And I think that should kind of also govern what we're thinking about doing our Biketoberfest. That's all I got to say.
Okay. I think there are six or seven thousand people, it's a much smaller town, but I do think we need to be looking at Sturgis. And I've had several people who were out there contacting me, as I'm sure some of you have. Commissioner Delgado.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to kind of change tack completely for everything that we've been talking about before and bring up a presentation that I'd like to have made to us or in the near future. Don Ariel, who is one of the founders, I don't know if I get the term right, of Radon Corporation, which is a company that was started by two former GE engineers for like, you know, I think they started for a few thousand dollars in their garage. And now it's a very successful defense contractor that used to be in Daytona Beach and is now in Port Orange. He has created a, a separate spinoff company that works with teaching math and music to children and developmentally delayed or disadvantaged or disabled adults. And he's looking to build some projects in cities. Daytona Beach is one of, the one he wants to do it here. Basically involves painting basketball courts with a special like pattern of numbers and colors and shapes, then letting kids play basketball and just play sports on it and collecting the data from that. And it's, it's a, it's a way to teach math and he, and music. And he wants to attack kind of poverty and things like that through increasing math education and familiarity with math and make math and music more accessible to people. I think it, I think in its simplest way, it, it works with colors and shapes, which I guess developmentally, children learn to recognize and manipulate colors and shapes first. So it's kind of a new, like, nomenclature for math and music, to look at it from colors and shapes. And his idea, the simplest way would be to take and pay people to paint these special basketball courts as a way of kind of stimulating the local economy and then have kids and people in the community use these things as a way of kind of developing some data sets, but also as part of a program that he has to improve math and STEM proficiency. And I don't pretend to understand the full thing, just, you know, giving you the, you know, the way bird's eye view. But I met with him for lunch a week or two ago and I thought our commission would be really receptive to what he has based on the number of educators and people like that on the commission and just the preferences and the passion we've had for STEM as well as just, you know, sports and community involvement. I mean, if you can couple outdoor activities with a chance to develop any kind of STEM proficiency, it seems like a win-win situation. And I mean, the investment is painting, is putting paint on basketball courts, which, you know, is not incredibly expensive. And he's also talking about paying kind of underprivileged people to, to paint this area. So it's kind of a, an economic stimulus in the same way. You know, it's a, it's an, it's an intellectual property play. It's very, you know, kind of trendy, I think. And it's the kind of thing that would be very attractive to a Silicon Valley group or like a, you know, a more sophisticated group. But he doesn't want to take the idea out to California or something like that. He really wants to make and keep Central Florida kind of as an up and coming tech corridor. And he really wants to stay in the Daytona Beach area. And, you know, so I've seen what he's done with Radon and I'd like to try to see if he can come and he would like to come and make a presentation to us, show us some of his ideas and what he's doing. And I think that would be a company that we could, you know, keep in the area and be a partner with in a very, you know, innovative project. Seems to me to have almost no downside and you're asking for, and you're talking about a very minimal investment. But he has all kinds of ideas for ways that this, these ideas can be worked into public parks and things like that with what we're doing with Esperado and all those other things. There's just going to be so many opportunities to put some of these ideas into public space. And so if we can combine, you know, playgrounds and basketball courts that we already have with education, I just see that as a win-win. Again, he's not talking about, you know, having to buy a million dollars worth of computers. So I've asked him to reach out to the mayor or city staff about maybe making a presentation if you guys are interested. I think it's an interesting project and this is the kind of stuff that I think we want to develop and keep in Daytona. I mean, these are a bunch of smart guys playing with computers and, you know, concepts like that. It's, it's a business, it would be perfect for Daytona Beach. And so, you know, I'd, I'd like to keep them here and, and keep them engaged. So if you guys have any interest, I think I'm going to try to get him to come in and talk to us and then see what you all think.
I like it.
I thought you, I thought you would, Paul. I think, I mean, I think it's right up, it's, it's, it's novel, I mean, it's different. I, I'm going to say I don't, I didn't, you know, I don't get it. Part of the problem is we've already learned math and music the traditional way. So, you know, you've got that kind of added block. But his idea is just through exposure and repetition, the kids will become comfortable with a different language. I mean, the way that we write math and music was developed thousands, hundreds or thousands of years ago, when all you had was the ability to make dots on paper with black ink. But now you can represent numbers with colors and shapes and all that, so.
Well, I think the mayor can attest to that. The perfect example is his wife and her math party. And, you know, she uses music to teach math and what have you. And what I'm thinking is while we're under the development of revamping the Dickerson Center, we've got a couple of basketball courts there. And there's, the Boys and Girls Club is at the Dickerson Center. And then you've got PPU right behind the Dickerson Center that has the Housing Authority kids. It'd be an excellent way to perhaps help those children to learn if they needed a pilot court. I got, I got a couple for you.
Yeah. And I think he's, I think it's, you know, I think it would be a good, I think, you know, it's one of these things too, it's avant-garde. I mean, it's definitely out there. I mean, it'll either be great, groundbreaking, or it'll be, you know, not. But it's, it's definitely the kind of, and it's a, it's a low, like I said, it's a low risk. You don't like it, you paint over the, you paint over it the next month. I mean, it's not going to be a, a huge outlay of anything. But, you know, I've learned that there are definitely, when you're in the, you know, smart, scientific people, you know, these are, this is what they do. And I'm trying not to get in the way of that and interject my limited understanding of math and science on them and just say, oh, I'm open to the idea, open to try something different. And, you know, they have, they've been very successful with simulators and other things like that in a very competitive military space. So they think this is a very, you know, a trillion dollar market because, you know, if you can help kids and people with special needs learn and improve the quality of life and teach them basic mathematical literacy, you know, how to count up to 100 so they can do stuff with money, how to tell the time, you know, calendars, just basic things like that, you're going to radically improve the quality of life. So some of these basketball court layouts have to do with, you know, telling time, the hands on a, position on a clock, you know, money change, you know, quarters, cents, up to 100. And then there's a thing about music with, I guess, music is, you know, a series of notes and there's some, there's a relationship obviously to do with math and music and notes and octaves and all that stuff. So, yeah, I think there's three different layouts that are about teaching kind of fundamental math literacy skills that, you know, you need to have a, a good workforce. So it's an investment in your workforce as well because you're going to improve. He, he talks about fighting poverty through eliminating a mathematical poverty. If you have people who are mathematically literate, you're going to have a much better workforce.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, I've had it, I've given him the mayor's information to contact him and I'm going to keep on him to do that and I get, or how we need to get him to come to do a presentation. What's the protocol for that? What's the right way for me to try to get that set up?
Just, just go with, get with staff because we agree, obviously, I want to hear from them. And Paula's right, that's, you know, that's really what my wife has cut her entire career on, creating programs that she sold all across the country in the, across the world to different school districts, using music and math, basically to teach people math through music and motion. And so I know it works and I know it, it works with children who struggle because one, it's an, it's an engagement technique. It, it engages kids in ways that's like disguised learning. And that's exactly what these courts sound like, is a disguised way that they're learning and they're not even aware that they're learning.
Right, you're saying, don't tell them, just go play basketball, don't think about what you're, don't tell them there's education involved, yeah.
Yeah. So, sounds like something I would be delighted to, to join in hearing. So unless we have objection, I think that's what, what we should, you should just get with staff and have them connected to the guy and move forward with the presentation.
Yeah, if, if staff will reach out to me, I'll get him the contact information and we'll get started on that.
All right. Anything else?
No. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, Paula. Looking forward to a few more months at least, so.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. So I have three quick points. And the first one is I would very much like for Commissioner Reed and myself to get an update at some moment as to where we are in MMB because we keep talking about it. And I just would like to know that before we start that we, I know it's just landscaping and beautification, but as a courtesy, before we start, if we could just notify that general community as to a start date or what to expect or in terms of any kind of intrusion into what goes on down there, that would be appreciated, that's the first thing. A second thing is Monday night I couldn't sleep. I had an interesting thought. The thought was, and it kept me up all night, the thought was help, what is really going on in our local community? So I, I spoke with Buck James and I said, so how is our food program going at the Ocean Center? And I, I remember starting with 600 bags of groceries for Housing Authority. That 600-bag concept is now going to 2,700 families in need. And not all 2,700 families are actually from Housing Authority. They're from families that are now experiencing the hit from unemployment. And so the number is increasing and not from Housing Authority, they're set. So an additional 2,100 families are now getting service. So that was an interesting little moment for me. Then from that point on, I started inquiring about when they go up with services, what is happening? And what's sometimes happening is that they're being moved, not shuffled, but told to call different resources. And that's a problem because after three or four pushes down the road, you sort of stop knowing what to do and you get a little bit demoralized. So I'm working on a little bit of a concept and I spoke with Dixie Margazi today and we're trying to work on an idea. So I'll let you know and I might need some help with it. But it's dealing with how to help people navigate that, not by giving them one more phone call, but how to help them navigate emotionally with what they have to do from their own strength position. And then finally, I think it's important that we keep telling people that we do have rent funds available. We have to keep pushing the message of what is available, what the resources are and where you can go. Because as time goes on, the emotional state of families is going to change. And that has a direct impact on their schooling and education, safety and security. So it's not just, it, it goes a little bit beyond just the rent and just the food. It's what is the impact of all of these things on the community? So those are the areas that I am investigating right now. But I appreciate the fact that we still have apparently over $200,000, is that correct? For our, I think I don't, two weeks ago it was 75, so you must have replenished the funds a bit. And so that means people can get some rent money for two months, up to $1,500, is that correct? Or is it $3,000? I think it's $3,000 per household, up to 1,500 per month, given that they are in the rears two months. And also the money is paid directly to the landlord. So that is just something that we have to keep sharing within as many communities as possible. All right? And that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And thank you all. Again, uh, congratulations to Ms. Reed and uh, congratulations to everyone in our city who participated in the electoral process. It is the, in my opinion, the most sacred, along with jury duty, of responsibility of those of us who are part of the greatest democracy in the history of the world, from my perspective. Um, uh, last thing on my list was, uh, the fact that during my campaign, this issue or notion of what, uh, many of the, uh, folks in the community who are given to fictitious, um, analogies and, and fear-mongering, uh, referred to our water and our drinking water in many uh, ways that were false and inaccurate, uh, just basically bold-faced lies. Um, you know, referring to us as, uh, a city that gave our residents, uh, what they call poopy water. Uh, and it's really in reference to, um, you know, the plant that we operate that is, um, about, uh, it's a pilot project where they purify and reclaim water with the objective of having it to, um, exceed drinking water standards. Uh, which, you know, was plainly a, a, basically a research, uh, water plant facility. Um, and with full knowledge of that, though, uh, people began to say that we were on the verge of having our residents to use this as their drinking water, which is, uh, it's first of all against the law to use that water, uh, for that purpose. Uh, our water has never, uh, been infused with reclaimed or recycled water. Our water comes from the Florida aquifer, and this is the first time that I've addressed this, uh, because in the process of campaigning, I try not to, uh, address things that I think are deliberately intend, intended, um, to cast a negative light on the city or on me as a candidate. Um, so, but here's what I think that we have to do, and I think it's necessary because, um, you know, we have a, a swath of people in our community and outside of our community who are driven by the negative, and they have a desire, a deep desire to paint all things that come from City Hall in a rather crass, uh, manner. And, and unfortunately, you know, some folks, as opposed to working with us, they just wanna work against us. So I, I think, you know, we've done a lot of good things to try to educate folks, the city managers, uh, bi-weekly update is doing a great job of uh, providing the community with information about what we're doing and what we're not doing. But I think that this plant never received the type of attention that it needed to receive in order for it to dispel these, uh, salacious myths, as I refer to them. Um, so what I think is that we should, staff should create a video, uh, that highlights what this plant is and what it does, and gives just a brief amount of information about our water system. Um, much like the, the video that we did on the Bennett Swamp, uh, project. I found that to be a very effective video and very informative to residents. Uh, and so sometimes when, when residents don't know things and we have a, take an extra step, and that's the one part of the, you know, um, conversation, if you wanna call it that, that I, I do concur with. It is our responsibility to do all that we can to, to create, uh, you know, to be the conduits of information and making sure that people know what we're doing. Uh, and we don't want our residents to have fear that we're on the verge of, of having to drink, uh, you know, reused water in this way. Um, and so I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, Jim, if you guys would, you know, just take some time. It shouldn't be that difficult, but something, uh, very much like the Bennett Swamp video, and Susan will recall what that was like. I found that to be highly effective at communicating what's going on.
Absolutely, Mayor. We'll, we'll work on that.
Okay. Um, all right. Do we have any other comments from anyone else?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just to, uh, there's also a county chair candidate who's saying the same thing. I, I had to confront him about that at, at event on Sunday. So we, we, we needed to take the opportunity to, to get the truth out because the vacuum has allowed this misinformation to, to circulate, so the sooner we can do that, the better.
Yeah. Thank you. Because that, and it's just important because you just have a group of people who want to, uh, oppose, and there's no problem with that. It's their right, but we wanna, when you have opposition uh, in a community, let's just have it fact-based. And, and we're not, we can all respect that, but when it's not fact-based, then it, it bleeds outside of the purview or the realm of candidacy into trying to paint the city, uh, into a certain light. Uh, my campaign, uh, could handle it, but I don't want the city to have, uh, any reputation that's associated with something that's, you know, patently false. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have any, uh, other comments?
Only, only one thing. I just wanna, uh, clarify that, um, Commissioner Gilliland really brought up. Um, we approved tonight a one-year extension of the gas tax distribution to, uh, Daytona Beach by the county. It's, um, all the cities get a piece of that. There's a formula that's been in place for a number of years, and that, uh, distribution is based on that formula. There is a, a move by a number of cities to change the formula so that, uh, it is based on road miles versus, uh, which is different than what the current formula is based on. And, uh, and it depends on the number of road, the amount or the mileage of roads within your community uh, would relate to the percentage that you would get, uh, of those funds. In our case, it reduces, it would reduce the funds available to us from that source by two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Which is about twenty-five percent.
Yes. And that's totally, uh, it, it's not truly representative of two things. It does not represent, um, where the gas tax funds come from. Forty percent of all tax revenue, uh, that is involved in this source is, is, comes from Daytona Beach. And we're gonna get significantly less than that. Um, the other thing that it doesn't take into consideration, um, is the traffic volume that comes in Daytona Beach and the volume, uh, that is constantly, uh, using our facilities and our roads, and, um, it's just not a fair distribution formula. I've made that, um, adamantly, um, apparent to all of the cities that have been involved in that discussion. Um, they, at this point, have not, um, not accepted, um, any alternative. But we, uh, plan to continue working on some alternatives and see if we can, um, find a more equitable way of making, uh, distribution of those funds to all cities, not just Daytona Beach. Similarly, so did, uh, Orman Beach. They were, uh, they're, they had a reduction of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the two cities that, uh, two of the three cities here, uh, that have the, really, some of the greatest impact, um, um, it was adversely affected by it. So we're gonna, we're gonna work on that a little bit, and, but I want you to be aware of it. It is significant funds, and it does impact the amount of money we have available for road improvements in our community. But with that, Mayor, that's all I have. Congratulations to you and congratulations to Commissioner Reed and, uh, to all of you who are elected officials. There's a lot of time, work and effort that goes into it every day, and it's not just a, a, um, once, once a week meeting. Uh, it's a constant meeting of the public, and no one's more aware of that than I am, and I congratulate each of you for the job you do, uh, for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chizzi. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both, and thank everyone for their great work. Uh, good night, Daytona Beach. This meeting is adjourned.